All people in this room have been given an opportunity to write your questions for the candidates on paper, and they've been handed to the moderator. I have not seen them, I don't know what the questions are. And so, they will be here for him to ask these questions. We will not be calling out any particular candidate. So if you wrote a question that said, blah, 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 I want to know what this, the question will be rephrased and go to both candidates. We will do A first and then B. And the next question, B first and A. They both have been told. We have papers in the back, so at a minute, they will see a green card. At a minute and a half, they will see a yellow timing card. And at two minutes, they will see a red card telling them that they must wrap up their presentation at that time. Also, anyone yelling out, making any rude comments, we will ask you to leave the room. Because that is not why we are here. We are here to give all Hanoverians in this Ashland District the opportunity to hear from both candidates. And so if that is why you're here, then that's not our purpose. It's not in what we're doing, and we will ask you to leave the room at that time. We also have asked that no signage, no pamphlets, anything like that be handed out. We are the Hanover NAACP, a nonpartisan group, and what we're doing is bringing to you both sides of the issue. And that is what we do. If you do anything against that, then we will again ask you to leave. Because that puts us at risk as an organization. Are there any questions?
Where can we get the cards to write questions?
We've already, they're on the back table. We add those to people. I do not believe we'll get to all of them that have already been written. Because there are so many that have been written. We will be here for an hour, and that is our time frame. If there's any discussions going on, we ask that you take those in the hallway. We're here for one purpose, to hear from the candidates. I am Patricia Jordan, President of the Hanover County NAACP. You're welcome. And are there any other questions? Yes?
Are we allowed to use our cameras on the phone?
The candidates? It's up to the candidates if they... We will be answering the questions. So yes, candidates have both agreed that they don't mind. And so that is fine. I know we have a video going here, and we have another going here. And so, anyone willing to do that, wanting to do that, it is fine. Again, we just want this to, we want to hear the voice of the candidates, no one else. Right? Any other questions? If not, then I will introduce our moderator for this evening, Mr. Anthony Keating. He is an Ashland resident, and we have asked him to moderate this event for the evening. We thank all of you for coming, and we will now turn this over to him.
Thank everyone for being here. I'm glad that you packed the house, as we like to say, and I'm glad that you're here to hear our candidates. At this point in time, since you've already heard me in my introduction, I would like to have each candidate introduce themselves. And I'd like to start with Ms. Yael Levine, and she will give us two to three minutes of her introduction, followed by Ms. Fay Pritchett, two to three minutes of her introduction. Then after that, I will start with the questions. I will start first with, again, Ms. Levine, and then we'll alternate back and forth with the questions. So, Ms. Levine.
All right. Well, wow, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. What an amazing turnout. Thank you to our hosts. Yes, thank you to our hosts. Thank you to Ms. Jordan and the hammer. Hold this. So again, thank you to our hosts, Ms. Jordan, the NAACP, Ms. Lavender, and to the library. One thing I always like to get out of the way when I'm talking to new people, and just in general public speaking, I have a tremor. It's a genetic condition in my family, and if you see me shake, that is the reason. So now that I got that out of the way, my name is Yael Levine, and I would like to represent you on the Hanover County Board of Supervisors. I would love to earn your votes tonight, but even if I don't, I'd like to, this to be the beginning of the great dialogue, because I believe that listening and learning to one another always leads to a better community for everyone. I'm a wife, a mother of two high school age boys, businesswoman and education advocate. I'm ready to bring fresh starts to Ashland, to the town of Ashland where we are tonight, and to equally represent the Cool Spring West area, the Atlea and Honey Meadows area, Kings Charter and Todd Potomac, the Kersey Creek area, and Sliding Hill area, and to change and improve the direction of Hanover County. I am also mindful that as supervisor, I will be serving all of the residents of Hanover County. I'm not a career politician, I never thought I would run for office, I decided to run for my children's future. Like many other parents who felt they were being pushed out of the driver's seat during 2020 lockdowns, I had an opportunity then to slow down and pay closer attention to what my children were being taught. It was a combination of the lockdowns that harmed my and many other children's mental health, and in many cases, physical health, and some things that I saw that were being taught that drove me to become more involved. As supervisor, I will serve you with transparency and humility, focus on smart and measured growth, and fight for additional growth and infrastructure improvements, uphold parental rights in education, radical political, almost done, teachings out of the classroom, protect girls' sports, and ensure the dignity, privacy, and safety of all students and teachers, support and fully fountain our brave and hardworking first responders and law enforcement officers, and work with and support local businesses and farms.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Pritchett, can you share with us?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here, and thank you to the NAACP for hosting this very incredibly well-attended debate. And I would like to say that I am shaking because I'm nervous. No matter how long you've done it, it is really hard to apply for a job. Maybe it's especially hard to apply for a job you've been doing for a really long time. I got involved when I first ran for the Ashland Town Council almost 22 years ago. I live in Hanover County. I don't live in Henrico County, I don't live in Richmond, I don't live in Chesterfield. And if you live here, you probably live here because you like living in a rural community. You don't want to live in those communities where people are shoehorned in together. And since the beginning of my time on the town council, and throughout all of my time on the Board of Supervisors, I've tried to make sure that we stay the rural county and that we kept the values that go along with a rural county. I'm very clear about what my lane is. I'm very clear that there has to be some development, or else we become stagnant. But in fact, we get to keep the countryside, we get to keep the small town. With all due respect, I don't think the town of Ashland needs a do-over. Our town council is doing a wonderful job making sure that this is a thriving community. My job is to make sure that all of the infrastructure and all the work that goes on around us keeps the rest of the county a thriving rural community where people want to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will start with the questions, and the questions will be asked to both candidates. I will start with Ms. Levine. For the first one, two new economic development zones are proposed along I-95 and Route 1 in the comprehensive plan revision. One more for Ashland and the other in Daswell. Do you support them and why? And if you need me to repeat the question?
I support economic development zones because they contain the economic development in specific zones that would not, I guess, encroach on other developments in other areas of the county. So I support in general the idea of economic development zones. Specifically, the plans for those zones. I know a little bit about the Route 1 one, I don't know much about the Daswell one. So I would need to know more specific specifics about the Daswell one. I'm obviously concerned about traffic and the type of businesses, which is why I would like to know more details. So, again, I support the concept, I would need to know more specifics.
Ms. Pritchett?
No, I don't. I support economic development. Without question, if we don't have business, we can't run the many programs that we support in this county. Roads cost money, schools cost money, everything we do costs money. On Route 1, there's a big piece of industrial land there that should be, in fact, used for industry. When we build industry that does its job, we pay for an awful lot of things in our community that keep our taxes at a reasonable rate, that allow us to have all of the amenities that we've become used to. I do not, in fact, support commercial, additional commercial development along Route 1. For the thing I said when I first introduced myself, most of us want to live in a rural community. The current plan calls for five curb cuts on Route 1 between I-95 and the town boundary or more or less, which allows fast food, gas stations. I've lived here for a very long time, I've never heard a single person say, hey, could you bring me another gas station or another fast food restaurant? I've literally never had that phone call. And I do not think that that's what the community wants, I don't think that's what the community stands for, I don't think that's what people think of when they say, I live in a small town. The piece in Daswell is a little bit more complicated. That is rural land, it is farmland, it is the camp town races land, but it isn't going to stay undeveloped forever. I mean, that's just the truth. And so, I do support development up there in a very limited way that is completely respectful of the farmers who live around it, of the people who live there and who value their way of life. First and foremost, the citizens of the county deserve to keep the way of life that they bought into, they've developed, and that they care about.
Ms. Pritchett, you can stay standing, this question's coming to you.
I'm a school teacher, so I'm telling you this is all coming back.
How many genders are there? How many genders are there?
It is a good question.
I'll just leave you with guns.
Yep.
I'll use that to start it.
I don't know that that's my place to say. Many cultures over many periods of time have celebrated genders in many different ways. It's, you know, in the world in which I were raised, in the world in which I was raised, there were two genders, there were men and women. And I, mostly, not always, people are born with one set of parts or another set of parts. But we all understand that some people are born imbramatic, and that this decision is made when they are born about what their gender is. I just simply don't believe that is my place to say. We all have to find a way to treat every single human being that we work with every day with respect and in all, in all due good faith. I don't believe I should ask anybody to see what's under their skirt or under their pants before I decide how I'll treat them.
Well, with the exception of medical cases of intersex, there are two genders. It's not really a question of do I know a thing, it's just a medical, biological reality. That has nothing to do with how I treat people. I definitely do not walk around asking people what they have under their clothes, and I definitely do not treat people differently. But there are two genders, with the exception of intersex, and that's up to the parents and the doctor to deal with that permanently.
Thank you. Ms. Levine, this question's coming to you, this was for all today. What is your position on the number of apartments and rentals going up in Hanover, including the 417 rentals on 301, which is Caldwell Park, and the application for more than 100 apartments on Atlea Station Road?
In general, in development, I'll get to that, I think it's gonna... I'm assuming that's going to cover the question on development?
I'm just pulling out a list.
Well, I mean, you have a question, so I'm assuming you're not going to read the questions?
I'm trying to repeat any questions.
Great. So, so like I said when I opened, I will focus on responsible and measured growth and absolutely want to maintain the rural character of the county. So, when we moved here from northern Virginia in 2005, my husband and I, we know overdevelopment, we lived in northern Virginia, and then we lived overdevelopment in Henrico County for 16 years. And so, since I decided to do this, I've been learning a lot, meeting a lot, going to a lot of zoning meetings, supporting supervisors' meetings, meeting with the sheriff, meeting with fire EMS chief, because development affects all of those issues, all of them. There are no simple solutions when it comes to development. We need and we want growth, especially because we want our children, future generations, to stay at the county and raise their families here as well. So we have a special gift here in Hanover County, which we don't have in Henrico and Chesterfield, and that's the suburban service area. And if you're not familiar with that, I recently learned about it, so maybe a little bit, but learned more in depth about it. And that is designed to contain the growth and the density such that it does not impact the rural parts of the county. So it is a great solution, it comes at a cost. Again, there's more density and very contained, I mean, very... It causes more congestion, so there is a price to pay. Our current board is in the final stages of the 20-year comprehensive plan. Well, I'm not dying to answer questions, so.
But the time is up.
I'm going to answer it or not.
The time is up, everybody has the same time.
We have another question.
Sure. Can you repeat the question?
The question is, what is your position on the number of apartment and rentals going up in Hanover County, including the 417 rentals on 301, which is Caldwell Park, and the application for more than 100 apartments on Atlea Station Road?
Caldwell Park was approved before I came on the board, and I would never have voted for it. It's a Larry Schei development, and I've been very clear with him that I would never have voted for it because it stretches too far out in the rural part of the county. Again, nobody out there ever said, hey, could you put some apartments out here? We would just want to... That being said, since I've came on, since I've come on the board, and the Scheis have bought that development and come back, they did ask for an opportunity to speed up the development a little bit, and I said yes at that point because they were able to provide, willing to provide some roads for the people who surround that development. If you're getting apartments in your neighborhood, you deserve roads to go with the apartments in your neighborhood. I think there are some perfect places for apartments. I recently voted for an apartment complex right at the intersection of 295 and Meadowbridge Road over by the hospital, because we need people to have places to live, to live who work at the hospital and who live in that general area. I don't support, even if it's in the suburban services area, having high-density development on the edge of our rural, of our rural area. Even if you live in the suburban services area, and I support it as a concept, people don't want to be shoved in with a shoehorn. We need people for places, we need places for people to live, but nobody wants to feel like they live in a box.
The next one's coming to you, Ms. Pritchett.
That's by the end.
Hey, your legs are going to get strong. What will you do to address election integrity in our county?
I don't think I need to do anything to address the election integrity. If you've met Terri Smithson over at the county registrar's office, she stays on me pretty tight, and I think that many people in this room on both sides of the aisle volunteer at election time. I will encourage everyone who supports me and everyone who doesn't, vote once. And come and be involved in the process, but honestly, I think Hanover County does a great job at election integrity.
Ms. Levine?
We do have a wonderful registrar, we run in Hanover County, and the volunteers and election officials we have do an amazing job, so we are in agreement on that. I would like, however, to see us go back to paper ballots, and if there is an opportunity to do so, and I would like to see us go back to paper ballots, and if there is an opportunity to do so, and I'm looking into that with state code, I would like us to be able to do so.
Thank you. This is, this question for you, Levine, is what is your opinion on biological males playing on female sport teams and using female lockers? And this is going to be for both.
So, my opinion is that biological bodies, boys do not be playing girls' sports. My opinion also is this topic should not be political, and it should not be controversial at all. For years, women fought for Title IX to get equal opportunities for sports, for girls and women, and now those opportunities are being snatched from right under them. Biological males are biologically built differently, they have certain physical advantages, such as larger skeletal muscles, larger hearts, larger lungs, and a greater number of red blood cells, which allows them to have, absorb more oxygen for aerobic advantage. So, I also don't want to see girls getting hurt in sports because of those biological advantages. I also don't want to put a girl in a locker room to have to undress in front of a male and vice versa. I will tell you that my sons have expressed to me that they're uncomfortable enough undressing around other boys because they develop at different stages, they sure don't want to undress in front of other girls. And so, again, I do not think this should, this is a controversial issue, nor should it.
Thank you.
Surprisingly, I agree with a good deal, not everything, but I agree with a good deal of what you said. But the reality is, there is no one-size-fits-all for this. If you look at Michael Phelps, one of the reasons why he has been such a successful swimmer is because he has such a phenomenal wingspan that he is able to move faster than many of the people who go through the water with whom he competes. I think that's also true for transgender athletes that may give them a biological advantage. I don't know the answer to that. I simply do not know the answer to that. Some folks who compete in sports have been on all kinds of puberty blockers, they may be in the physical shape of the same people, the people of the same gender with whom they compete. I don't know the answer, but I believe deeply in Title IX, I believe in protecting our female athletes. I'm sorry to say, no, I'm not sorry to say, I think it's sometimes important to say when we don't know the exact answer to this question. But I think that we do use this particular issue to complicate a lot of other issues, and I want to make sure that we're super careful with every human being and allowing every human being to reach their potential. So I don't think you're totally wrong, but I don't think we totally know that answer yet either.
Next question for you, Ms. Pritchett?
Okay, don't vote.
The rhetoric of politics today, from the national level to the local level, seems to be, my side is right, if you disagree, you are wrong and must be the enemy. How do you plan to work for your constituents who do not necessarily share the same views as you?
Just the same as I have for the entire county. I had the great good fortune of starting my political career on the Ashland Town Council. If you don't know, cities and towns don't run on party. There were people that I served with for greater than 10 years, and I never knew their political party, and it was absolutely wonderful because all we had to do was talk about issues. There is a person in this room who I won't really stare at, who was on the opposite party from me, and I listened to him as much as I ever listened to anybody in my own party. I focus on issues, I don't focus on party, I am not in the least bit embarrassed to be a Democrat, but there's just no party in who gets your trash picked up, there is no party in who cuts your grass, there is no party in who makes good land use decisions. Good government is good government. I've got Democratic friends, I've got Republican friends, and frankly, I don't plan to change anything.
Thank you. Ms. Levine?
Well, that question brings me to one of the reasons I'm running for this office, because my dream, my goal is to go back to not that many years ago, when my boys were young and played soccer at the Ashland U League at Core Farm Art. And, say 16, so what, 10 years ago? So not that long ago, and nobody cared what party you voted for, nobody talked about it, and even if you did, we had lively debates, and you could still be really good friends. And I felt like we were great neighbors and great friends and a great community. And so, one of the reasons I'm doing this is to bring that back, that unity back that I feel that we've gone so far away from. So, my best friend, she's not here, she lives in my government, my best friend is staunch Democrat, and we do just fine. So, I think I would represent all my constituents fairly, I would listen to all of them, just like I'm hoping to listen to everyone here tonight, just like I want to be listened to when I come to speak to the school board, when I come to speak to the Board of Supervisors. I want to be listened to as a human being, not as a Republican, not as a Democrat, not just as a human being. So, I would assume everybody else wants to be listened to the same way.
Levine, I'm going to ask you this question. If you see me shuffling papers, I'm taking out the duplicate questions so we don't have to repeat them, okay? This question is, do you support Hanover County Public Schools book policy?
I do. I'm happy to go into more detail. Basically, nobody's banning books. And there's a difference between what is happening in the school libraries and what happening in the public libraries. We need to make that distinction because that distinction is important to make. So, the policy doesn't ban any historical books or any books about, with historical context, or even books that have sexually explicit seeds in them that are of educational value or historical context. The policy actually does make exceptions for those kinds of books. The policy takes that pornography out of our schools, that's what it does. And the policy, this Virginia Code, very clearly defines what sexually explicit is, and it very clearly defines what harmful to a minor is. And so the policy, what the policy does is abide by that. And what, when it comes to the public library, all that people are asking for is to put sexually explicit content in a section for people who are 18 and older, who are adults by law. So, that is my position, and I will not go into further details, but no one is banning books, and we're just taking pornography out of our schools, not the public library.
Thank you. Ms. Pritchett?
I'm going to shorten the line of it, no, I don't support that policy. And I've been an educator for a really long time, I've been a reader since I could read. And what I'm going to say is this, it's easy to say that we're banning pornography from the schools. because we've looked at a bunch of books and we've said, here are the dirty parts. I don't want those books here. And I want to make a couple of distinctions. First of all, very important books can sometimes contain things that are vulgar. Doesn't mean the entire book is vulgar. But not every book is for every child, but not every book should be banned for every child. And it cannot be that we say, give the power back to the parents, but not these parents. You don't have those options of those books for your children. And I would like to point out that the policy that the school board is currently using to ban books is those books all have to be run through the point of view of very particular groups who like or don't like those books. I support, by the way, every parent in Hanover County Public Schools currently signs that your children have the option to check out books or not check out books. And every parent in Hanover County has the option to say that they don't want their children to have certain books. I believe in the power of the parents and I believe in the power of choice. I believe that librarians and teachers are well-intended. As I look at the beginnings of the policy this year that require elementary school teachers to document a paragraph about every single book that is in their classrooms, I'd like to know where the time to teach your children comes from.
Thanks.
Sorry, but there are heavily factual inaccuracies.
Nice question.
Okay. Next question. Ms. Pritchett.
Ms. Pritchett, who cannot learn to stand up.
Does Hanover need a 60-bed hospital in Ashland?
Let's do a fine one. Actually, we do need a 60-bed hospital. We don't need the traffic necessarily that comes with the 60-bed hospital. As many of you know, HCA has proposed a 60-bed hospital right at the corner of Sliding Hill Road and I-95. With it is going to come traffic, and that is a problem. And there is no question that we are going to have to deal with that. But I point out to you that moments save lives when it comes to things like strokes and heart attacks. And the proposal for the location of the 60-bed hospital is right next to King's Charter. It is right next to Honey Meadows. It is right next to Cool Springs. It is moments from Milestone. Even though, as the crow flies, it's 10 minutes away from Memorial Regional, which, by the way, my family has used for generations. If you are having a stroke, there's a very good chance that your life gets saved if you get to a hospital faster. Our fire and EMS chief has told us that those seconds literally change the outcome for someone's life. I have an 87-year-old mother. I know what it looks like when it doesn't happen quickly. And so, yes, I believe in more healthcare options for Hanover County.
Sabine.
I think it would be very nice to have a 60-bed hospital on Sliding Hill and Alley Station Road. I have spoken to many stakeholders in the community about this hospital project. I've spoken to the fire and EMS chief, and of course, his opinion is, you know, that they are in favor. It would obviously help from their perspective, from first responders' perspective. I've spoken to many nurses in the community. Many of them work at Memorial Regional. And until I spoke with them, I actually didn't realize how strapped they are because they serve Tappahannock and that area. So I'm glad I spoke with them and learned a lot from them. So they really want this hospital. I've also spoken with a lot of residents in my neighborhood, in my area, in Honey Meadows, Cool Springs, and Toddot Potting, and King's Charter, and the entire, you know, district, I guess. And a lot of people are justly concerned about the traffic and the infrastructure that we don't currently have to support that hospital. So again, speaking with a lot of stakeholders, I would like, it would be really nice to have, you know, everybody complained during COVID that we didn't have enough hospitals. That we didn't have enough to support all of the people who are sick with COVID. So it'd be really nice to have, again, with all development, it's a matter of prioritizing. So probably would go for that over appointments. It would have to be a case-by-case basis. But yes, I'm speaking, as I'm speaking to stakeholders in the community, they want it.
Sabine, before you sit down, the next question is going to be to you. How do you feel about vaccine mandates?
I oppose mandates. I oppose government interfering in our lives. We have a constitution. We have a beautiful system in our country, a constitutional republic. I grew up in a different country, in Israel. I grew up under a parliamentary system and a very different form of government. And I've been in many countries in the world. And we have freedoms here that nowhere else in the world, no one has anywhere else in the world. We are very, very fortunate. I've also served in the military of Israel because everybody has to go and serve in the military at 18, which is, you know, an obligation you have to, we have no other choice. So with that, you know, I'm familiar with the concept of having to give something up for the greater good. But a vaccine made it is not something I'm willing to accept. I don't think anyone should be willing to accept, especially when those vaccines, we now know, do not stop transmission. Vaccines take years to develop. We have not seen one. I'm against mandates.
Thank you.
One of the things I've seen over, not only just 20 years in public service, but a lifetime of living in America, is everybody's for free speech, right? I should be able to say whatever I want, and I can. And the police will not come and arrest me for saying it. But it doesn't take away my responsibility for what I said. I'm not freed of the consequences of what I say. And I feel the same thing about vaccines. I don't feel that anyone should be held down and given a vaccine against their choice. But I do think that vaccines are a social responsibility. Vaccines do take years to develop. But in fact, the technology that went into developing the COVID-19 vaccine had been underway for decades before it was matched to the particular virus and we had the vaccine mandate. So I think that while we shouldn't hold you down and make you take a vaccine, I think it's perfectly acceptable to say, if you don't have a vaccine, you're not allowed in a nursing home. If you don't have a vaccine, you're not allowed in a public school. I will share with you that one of my dearest friends who works in healthcare was not able to convince her two oldest sons to get vaccinated. I will share with you that in November, we will celebrate one year of their deaths, one year apart, one month apart, I'm sorry. People died of the vaccine. I mean, I'm sorry. Please record this, Ms. Pritchett. People die as a mistake from every new technology. But the truth is, many people died of COVID. A million people in this country died of COVID. Having a COVID vaccine is a personal responsibility. And I feel that there are consequences for decisions. And I'm standing up, I'm not sitting back.
This question is going to both of you. I have to rework this question because it was directed at one particular individual. How do you both work with your own party? While you represent the residents, how do you represent the residents while your own party tends to tear down the opposite party as they're dealing with politics?
First of all, I think I don't do that. As a servant leader, it is my job to take care of all the people who live in my district. And I want to say to you that over the time I have been a servant leader in this district, not one single time when someone has called me and said, I have a problem, have I started with, are you a Republican or a Democrat? I have never asked that question as a part of serving people. I think my party is aware of that. My party has never suggested that I start to ask that question. But I think, just like every other good behavior that citizens commit as a part of their work in life, you set the example of doing the right thing, and I hope that I continue to do that.
Yeah, I don't even think that's something that would even cross my mind. So I don't think that's something that would even come up within the Republican Party to treat people differently or serve them differently based on party affiliations. So it would never even bother me to ask someone what their party affiliation is if they reach out to me with a constituent.
This next question. Given the fact that Hanover County students' scores are higher than other counties that shut down during the pandemic, if there were an uptick, would you opt to shut down schools and county offices or keep them open? If there was an uptick in terms of uptick in terms of the virus or anything.
Oh, good. If there was a need to shut down a specific school for a very short time period, like a week or two, because there was an outbreak within a specific school, which I think was done, yes, but not the entire system, division.
I think that's a sound answer. That we've learned a lot about COVID over the course of the last few years. And I think you shut down sources of problems, there's not necessarily a reason to shut down a whole school system unless we saw a massive uptick that looked like it was going to affect large groups of people. We know one of the worst places for COVID was nursing homes, right? So in a minute, you shut down nursing homes because it appears that COVID affects the elderly far more quickly than it affects other people. We have learned what we did not know at the beginning of COVID, that children are less likely to be susceptible than adults are. So we see a giant uptick in a particular school, yes, you shut it down, but not an entire school system.
Thank you. I will go back to Ms. Pritchett. What is your view of DC-2 RBA? What will you do to protect the town?
First of all, I trust the town council. I've served on council for 14 years. And what I know is the folks who are elected to serve the town of Ashland live, eat, and breathe the town of Ashland. I saw things in newspapers that were utterly untrue about the effect of DC to RBA. I called reporters. I walked them through the town of Ashland to look at what would be lost. I sat in a meeting with the Department of Rail and Public Transportation where somebody said, of course, it's going to kill your downtown. But hey, I love Ashland, it'll come back. Those of you who know me can imagine what the words were like. What I intend to do is continue to lobby that there is never one answer, that people live here, this is people's homes. 22 years ago, when I started doing this, it was for one reason only, which is that I love this town more than I love anything except my family. I almost didn't run for the board of supervisors because I wasn't sure I was going to be able to support the people of the county the way that I did in the town because I wasn't sure that I understood what people in subdivisions care about. And before long, I understood that what everybody cares about, after your friends and your family, you care about your home. It is where you raise your family, it is where your children are born, and it is where your life happens. And so people care the most about protecting their homes. And so this DC to RBA thing is a nightmare for this town. Not in some abstract entity way of a town, but because this is people's homes. And so what I intend to do is continue to trust town council, work on the, with the Department of Rail and Public Transportation to say, fine, 323 seems like an option that works. Something going through the center of the town destroys people's lives, and we can't shy away from saying that.
If I understand the question correctly, is
DC to RBA?
I'm assuming we're talking about the rail?
I assume so.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that I understand the question correctly, whoever asked the question. I would not be in support of that. Really, you can't really disagree with Ms. Pritchett on this.
Down to the last two questions before we wrap up. Because many of the questions that I had were duplicates of things that we've already asked. And this may be already asked in some way. How will you protect the rights of all Hanover citizens specifically regarding medical choice and parental rights?
So there are many ways. I mean, as a supervisor, I would get to appoint, one of the ways is to get to appoint a school board member. That is how I would protect the rights of parents and their children. And the way to do that is to appoint a well-rounded school board member. We just had an appointment process of two school board members in Beverden and Henry District. And we saw 12, I believe, people who applied for the two positions. I think that's amazing. If we had an election, for example, we would probably get two or three people for each of the seats. So I think it's amazing that we had such a big pool to choose from. We want to, I would want to, I would set very high standards for a school board appointment when the time comes for Ms. Hawkins, for her term to end. So that would be one way. And I would be very transparent about that process. Everyone will get the same interview at the same time and set very high standards. Someone who would be invested in the schools. Someone who has good knowledge of the code of education. Someone who is versed in the science of learning, well, versed in the science of learning. Someone who respects parental rights and teachers. My mom was a teacher for 32 years, so I have huge respect for teachers. There are other committees, of course, that I would have to appoint people with the right set of skills for those committees so that they would serve the citizens of the county well. So that is how I would serve them. Of course, I would listen to all the citizens and, again, not quite politics with the role.
So I'll go on the other side of the question, I'll start with the question of medical choice.
Sorry, I forgot that, sorry.
It is in our job to make medical choices for our citizens. What is our job is to make sure that citizens have medical choices. So we've got Memorial Regional, we've got the buildings that surround it. But it is largely the only part, it is largely all we have, and it is not in our part of the county. What we don't have access to is a lot of healthcare on our end of the county. And when healthcare means, options in healthcare mean survival. I think it's important to make sure we have as many healthcare options on our side of the county as possible. And that also means fully funding fire and rescue, making sure that we are building a new fire and rescue station so that we have quicker response times, people can get to you faster, and that they are trained better, and they, in fact, can get you to the hospital faster. So a bunch of services, really. In terms of schools, I want to make it clear what has seemed to be so fuzzy over the course of the last two years. It is the job of the board of supervisors to set the budget for the school system. We do not get a say in really where they put the money that we give them. We can't go in and say, no, no line item there, no line item there. We have to give adequate funding to make sure that we can hire teachers, that we can do the work that goes on inside of schools. We have to make sure that we keep our buildings up to date. Something that I will say was not being done even 12 years ago. And we're doing a much better job of making sure the facilities themselves do the job of educating children today. today. And second is choosing school board members. We have no say over what goes on inside of schools. That is not our job, and we should not be interfering with what our school board members do, other than to choose the most qualified people. That's what the law says, other than what the school board says we should do. Thank you.
In the time that we have remaining, I'm going to exercise my authority as moderator and as the biggest person in the room. I'm going to... He's taller. I'm going to ask each of the candidates to give us three minutes in anything else you'd like to share with us before we wrap up. Anything you didn't get a chance to talk about before, or anything you wanted to leave with us, three minutes.
Sure. So I wanted to wrap up what I said about development, because it's very important because I know people in this county are very, very passionate about development, as am I, because we moved here, it was one of the reasons we moved here. And so what I wanted to say was that, yes, we need to keep, we all want to keep the county rural, but we do have to concentrate, concentrate the development in suburban service area. It does not mean we put 1,000 units and live like in cardboard boxes. It does not mean we do that, but we do have to keep it in the suburban service area, so do not include on the rural parts of the county. We're also in Dillon rural states, so that means that we are limited to what the state has expressly, basically what the state expressly lets us do. And we have, we're in the process of the 20-year comprehensive plan that the current board is going to wrap up, I believe. So I think if we're going to do development, I think what is important to focus on is that if we're going to have development, we need to make sure we have the infrastructure in place and basically have the developers pay for the infrastructure if we don't have it in place, and then pay for the road improvements so that we can accommodate the new development. It has to be done in combination with the fire and EMS and with the sheriff's office, and that is already part of that process. The books, the policy does allow for certain books, even if they do contain sexually explicit content, if they're challenged to remain if they are of educational value or historical value. So I urge you to take a look at the policy. Parents can't just come and say, I want this book on, and it's gone. That's not how it works. It's on our policy list. To wrap it up again, I really want to thank everyone. This is an amazing turnout, and I really appreciate it that you listen to us. I enjoy it a lot. As I go along, I have a lot to learn, but I'm learning and listening, and I love this engagement. This is how every meeting should be, and I look forward to more dialogue. Thank you.
So you might be the biggest person here, but I might be the oldest. No, Don is older than me. But I want to say that the first newspaper interview I gave, which, by the way, was really bad a long time ago, somebody asked me, what's the most important thing you do? And I said, and I have been saying for 20 years, it's the comprehensive plan. It is also the least sexy thing we do. And we beg the people, beg, please come out for the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is a 20-year plan for how land gets used in Hanover by law. It's updated every five years, and no one comes, right? We do it, and absolutely no one comes, and I've been complaining about that for 20 years. This year, in Hanover County, we have hired a new Director of Community Development named Joanne Hunter, and that's what we said to her, like, we're doing a lousy job, we are not getting people involved. And to be fair, I don't know of any locality that do a great job with their comprehensive plans, but I know what people care about, I know what they come to complain about when developments get proposed. I'm keenly aware. So as part of changing the way we do things, we don't invite people to come into us to talk about comprehensive plans anymore. Of course, you're welcome, but we come to you. And as part of doing this comprehensive plan, we have had 20 in-person meetings, 4,000 comments that we've received, 692 people who participated, 392 respondents to visioning surveys, 336 participants in visual preference surveys, 261 social media posts, 15,000 social media Facebook page reaches. I've got this list, so I don't use up all my time if you want to see it. The upshot is the most involved comprehensive plan we have ever done. It is the one I am the most proud of that we have ever done. We have invited people in, we've invited people to be participants. And I think the upshot is that we've given people what they ask for. We have added transitional zones between rural and urban, and rural and suburban. We have put a great deal of emphasis on living in a rural county. If this comprehensive plan doesn't come closer to making land use in this county what people want it to be, I literally don't know what else we could do, except that we hire good people to keep it going and keep it getting better every year. That, I think, is what I always see as my number-one job.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who's here tonight, thank the NAACP for hosting this event. I do have, I do have a final question that I held off because I want to direct this to everybody in the room. Everybody may not be able to answer it. It's a three-part question. It's like, do you know the significance of Sue Watson to the district? What is it? And can you identify her? If you can identify, if you can answer it, okay, this is for everybody. Anybody who wants to answer as far as...
We want to thank Anthony for being our moderator, for giving... We'd like to also thank all of you for coming out and showing interest in your district. Thanks to our two candidates, didn't think it was a waste of their time to come out and answer questions from our community. Well, it's 7:30 on the dot. We set 6:30 to 7:30, one hour, and we've done that. We are also saying that we will have our next candidate's forum Thursday, South Anna District, and that is the debate between, well, candidate's forum, between Claire Scott and Ms. Sue Dibble. Please come out and join us for that. Good evening. Thank you all for coming.